Okay, next on the agenda is introductions and citizens. Officer Beal, could you start for us?
Justin Beal.
Samantha.
Matt Spencer.
Richard Ruse.
Kayla Anderson.
Kayla Castle.
Iris Shear.
Bill Pang.
Sarah Inger.
Jennifer Holbrooke.
Tim Schlatter.
Adie Hahnberger.
April Moore.
Charlie Berger.
Anne Frey's.
Audrey Asen.
Uh, Greg Rice.
Rachel Carpenter.
Eva Carpenter.
Brett Carpenter.
Gary Wanzeller.
John Clausen.
Cheryl Prentice, new son.
Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. So first on the list is Anne Frey's. Ms. Frey's.
Anne Frey is for Wayne Public Schools. The Journal Gazette recently published an article by retired Carmel Superintendent BSU Professor Jeff Swenson and Michael Schaefer, BSU Professor of Educational Leadership. Their article praises public school teachers for their acceptance and devotion to all students. They thank teachers for their empathy and for their partnership with parents. Swenson and Schaefer know that a teacher is an ally who creates a safe space and shares her passion for learning. They tell teachers, quote, "What you do is essential to our democracy. As Americans, we pledge with liberty and justice for all." A school board has demanding work, including overseeing the district budget and adopting policies, but the obligation of advocacy for all students in public education is the guiding principle. Responsible members of the community who generously give their time and commitment to board membership always have this in the back of their minds. Parents and/or community members who respect teachers and their school board contribute positively to the educational process. Their supporting actions are a gift to their own children and to the children of the community. Parents and/or community members who demean good teachers, administrators, and board members in the work they do can disrupt the educational process. As the adults, we should commit to the best education for our youth. After all, they are America's greatest resource. Why wouldn't we want them to be knowledgeable about the world? Why wouldn't we want them to respect and learn from diversity? Why wouldn't we want them to engage in curriculum that professional educators have chosen? Why would we want our children to be prejudiced and discriminate in the name of religion? For many people, religion is love, but much of the rhetoric of extremists doesn't convey that. Loving adults cooperate, debate respectfully, and compromise to ensure our children are educated and healthy in every sense of the word.
Next on the list is Rachel Carpenter. Ms. Carpenter?
I stated before at a meeting that most parents are concerned about the sexualization of their children in public schools. I cited a survey done by RISN Research in partnership with the Capital Resource Institute. I quote, "It is an unusual issue on which people from all political and demographics agree." For example, seventy-nine percent of whites, seventy-three percent of blacks, and Hispanic voters, and seventy-two percent of other minorities were at least somewhat concerned that school-aged children are being exposed to sexual material that is not age-appropriate, end quote. But there are people still coming here saying that this is a minority view. It is not. It is the large majority view that obscene books in public schools should not be the case. Parents simply do not want this for their children. Why won't the board listen to what is clearly desired by the majority of parents? It is what's forcing parents to remove their children from public schools. Another point that needs to be made clear is that no serious person would deny that the U.S. was an explicitly Christian nation when it was founded. But even though that is the case, those of us who have spoken about removing sexually explicit material from the curriculum are not trying to force our beliefs onto others. We are asking the school to not force non-Christian morals onto students. We want the schools to teach math and English and not indoctrinate or push Christian or non-Christian ideologies. We're asking the school to respect the children of every faith and every ideology. We want East Noble to leave morals and religion to the parents and to prepare their students academically so that they can get the best job after they graduate.
Next on the list is Eva Carpenter. Ms. Carpenter?
My name is Eva. I want to talk about CRT is racist. I want to speak because some woman spoke at the last meeting saying that I don't like CRT because it offends my white Christian tribalism. Look at me. I'm not white. CRT is bad. CRT is racist. I am a minority. My family is diverse. The true history is the Republicans and then slavery. Democrats wanted slavery. Yep, you hear that right? Let me repeat that. The true history is the Republicans and then slavery. Democrats wanted slavery. You can laugh if you want. You can laugh. Why do white people think they know what is the best for me? They don't. CRT is racist. Wake up, white people. Wake up, white people. CRT is racist. Wake up, white people. CRT is racist.
Please address it to me. Thank you. On the list is Brett Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter?
My name is Brett Carpenter. I just wanted to speak a little bit about what Jen Blackman said at a previous meeting. And I quote, he said, "I am very proud of us for the things we have done for the East Noble School Corporation. We have passed things. We have listened to public input here at the meetings." Well, my perspective is you've made terrible policy decisions. You haven't listened to the public. No, actually, the board has lied, slandered the public. You've actually violated Constitution. You've broken the law. You've done so many things bad that has actually caused hundreds of students to leave the school district. For example, you just passed a transgender policy that puts the agreement, the little girl, in a terrible position that no parent would want for their child. The whole purpose of the policy is missing in the policy. The one thing the policy doesn't state is that a boy will be removed from a girl's sports. You're proud of that? Leaving little girls at East Noble in danger. How hard would it have been to just put in a policy if a violation has occurred, the girl will be, or the boy will be immediately removed from the girl's sport? You couldn't do that. Unbelievable. I did research, and I found out why so many people have pulled their kids from East Noble, and it's because of bad decisions. Not good decisions. Mask mandates, contact tracing. That irated the public. You were doing ridiculous policies inconsistently, causing the parents to become angry and coming here, and that is one reason all over the country, not just here, everywhere, many parents decided to pull their kids from school because of these dumb policies. You were sending healthy kids. My kids got sent three times when they weren't sick because they sat within a meter of somebody who was diagnosed with COVID. Unbelievable. And you're proud of that? You hired a superintendent with a stained reputation who ran off the best principal the city had. You're proud of that? The board couldn't wait to vote on Andrew Dummings resignation. Why couldn't you just put it off him up? Only one board member showed her disapproval. Are you proud that you guaranteed that students have masturbation in their curriculum? Really? You think that was a good decision? It wasn't. Are you proud that East Noble, not only does worse at educating than the average homeschooler, but that East Noble offers one of the worst educations compared to any of the surrounding public schools? It's a shame, and it's a disgrace. You're failing. Are you proud that East Noble just experienced a net loss of two-hundred-and-seventy-five students? Really, you're proud of that? You think your decisions are good? None of your decisions were in the best interest of the students.
Good evening, Board. It appears that whenever folks stand up in opposition to policy, which is our right to do, and I would hope that would be welcomed, well, it's not welcomed. And we're called demeaning if we don't agree with your policies. Let me give a couple of examples here. You know, in the August meeting, Mr. Pine, and I like you, Mr. Pine, accused our small vocal group of wanting names of book review committees' members so we could harass and intimidate them. September meeting, President Durbin reinforced Mr. Pine's August accusations. Board Member Anderson levels false accusations on social media against John Clausen, the most respectful, polite, mild-mannered articulate person in our small group, claiming he is harassing women at school board meetings. September meeting, I sent an email to Dr. Gramau and Board President Durbin requesting fifteen minutes to publicly address their false accusations. In my email, I also welcomed that I would entertain any board input during my fifteen minutes. My request was denied. Of school employees, Mr. Walters, I believe, addressed the board claiming more false accusations against Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter spoke with Mr. Walters, proving his allegations to be false. Mr. Walters graciously apologized to Mr. Carpenter, which is recorded, stating he would have publicly apologized for his error. To date, that I'm aware of, correct me if I'm wrong, unless you get the gavel, no board members or administration staff have reached out to myself, Mr. Clausen, or Mr. Carpenter in an effort to find common ground or to discuss all of these false accusations leveled against us. It is clear, or certainly has the appearance, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that this board and administration will bully and falsely accuse those who publicly oppose your immoral policies. You want to create division, so it appears. You want to turn the community against those who express, sometimes loudly, yes, who express opposition. That's why it seems you make public false accusations from your thrones and keyboards without allowing the accused to respond fully. In fact, if the accused publicly object to your public spirit tactics at the time they are made, the police will relocate themselves to the front from the back.
Mr.?
I didn't speak.
Thank you for your comment. Boston?
Good evening, Board. I hope you have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year coming up. John Clausen, Rome City, Indiana. Tonight, I simply want to urge you to do what I believe you know in your heart to be the right thing, and that is not to fill the heads of East Noble students with destructive culture, but instead to focus on academics. You have been presented now with multiple opportunities to do the right thing from multiple people, following multiple approaches. If what several of you have professed to me is true, then you know what the destiny is for those who cause children to stumble. Do not fall for the empty rhetoric that this is all about banning books and censorship. We all know that governance of materials in schools is as old as time. This is about what is good, necessary, appropriate for K through twelve education. It should not take months or multiple committees to study what is obvious. Doing so communicates where your hearts are. Clearly, Indiana Code, passed by decades of Republican supermajorities, they're unenforceable due to the vagueness of its criteria. Just frickin' amazing. Essentially, if the law is your guide, then as long as the book is not sexually offensive as a whole, then you're legal to keep it, whether that's one chapter, scattered paragraphs here and there, or forty-nine percent of the book. All can be interpreted as meeting the legal threshold as a whole. Now, you can choose to fall back on the very low bar of minimally legal, which you often express, but the parents, the grandparents, the constituents, and faith groups in your community are asking you. Now, we're expecting you to do better than that. You have introduced a great chasm here in front of us that stands as a symbol of your relationship with the community. Respect is earned. Placing disrespectful materials in front of eyes of students is no way to earn respect that you demand. But some here have expressed what's more important is academic performance, not dirty books, not boys in sports. So let's talk about that because this filth and the materials directly connect it. What are the impacts of a culture of self-destruction? True self-confidence is not developed upon a foundation of sexual grooming, confusing identity ideologies, social contagion, fads, and skin color. Teamwork and a sense of community are not fostered through identity politics and envy. Purpose is not inspired in a young mind when they're told that they're mere animals or a clump of cells. Optimism is not born from messages that we live on a dying planet and we're all killing the planet by our very existence. A deep desire to strive and create is not forged when equal outcomes are said to be the virtue. Critical thinking is not aroused from a single state-sanctioned point of view and is not eradicated by belittling people into compliance to never question the experts. Family is not nurtured through the normalizing of sexual promiscuity leading to a cycle of broken homes and under-engaged parents. If we, all of us, desire better outcomes, then we need to consider what's being taught to students through English, social studies, science, and the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Slatter. Mr. Slatter?
My name's Tim Schlatter. I've lived here all my life, other than the six years I was in the military. First of all, I want to say I don't think critical race theory is being taught in East Noble. I think you have to get to a university before that's being taught. Now, I made a few comments on the Engage East Noble media site. My last comment was not posted. In reply, the moderator said, "We will not post your propaganda." My post said, "U.S. crime statistics prove your child is safer in the hands of a drag queen," reading to them, "than a preacher, minister, or priest doing the same." This isn't propaganda. These are facts. As of Friday, four-hundred-and-eighty-two religious-affiliated people have been charged for abuse of children. Zero drag queens have been discharged. Have facts become propaganda? The largest group was family and friends. The smallest was LGBTQ with three offenders. That makes them seven one-hundredth of one percent. Why are these people being attacked by these so-called religious groups? I want my grandkids taught facts and real science, not religious mumbo jumbo. If these people want their children taught this crap, they can put them in a religious school, leave East Noble alone. Secondly, I would... Secondly, somebody brought up that this was founded on Christianity, this country. Well, the colonies may have been Christian. They also burned witches, which is ridiculous. When the Constitution was written, it specifically left all that out because it was the Enlightenment period, and people realized that religion destroys countries. It should not be in our Constitution. It should not be in our schools. It should not be in our country, period. Thank you.
Is Anna Hornberger?
Hello. And Rosie Hornberger. I'm Anna Hornberger. The director of Noble County Pride. Thank you all for doing such wonderful work. I just wanted to start that by saying I think everybody is doing a great job, and we appreciate all your hard work. One thing that I wanted to mention that someone mentioned to me. Recently, we've had a number of different events, putting dances and recitals and things like that. And I wanted to mention the dress code. I noticed that with girls, we're asked to wear skirts or dresses and heels. And I was hoping, I saw that the dress code policy for the school in general is very nicely worded, and it's kind of gender-neutral, and the kids can wear what they feel comfortable wearing. But for the actual events, it seems like it's a much more gendered and kind of specific dress code. And I just was wondering if the board could maybe look that over for future events, if there's any kind of wiggle room to make things a little bit more inclusive for maybe some students that don't feel comfortable wearing skirts or dresses or heels and things like that. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is minutes from the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. You had a chance to review that. Any questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Blackman to accept the minutes as presented, seconded by Mr. Trulove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Okay, Board, claims from December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. You have a chance to review those. Any questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Pine to approve as presented, seconded by Mr. Trulove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to personnel items, resignations. I believe there's any retirements and trainations.
I'll make a motion to accept as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Dr. Jansen to approve as presented, seconded by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. And then reassignments. We have a few reassignments that you had a chance to review.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve to accept by Mrs. Klein, seconded by Mrs. Blackman. All those in favor signify.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. New hires?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
We have a motion to accept new hires as presented by Mrs. Klein, seconded by Mr. Trulove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. And then leave requests. There are a few leave requests.
I'll make a motion to accept as written.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept as presented by Dr. Jansen, seconded by Mr. Pine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Because of our, I think it was our business meeting, we have no instructions this evening. So we will move on to the business portion, and we're doing this. Normally, we do it the first board meeting at the beginning of every year, but since we have new members and there is a certain timeframe that we got to get it done in January, we're going to go ahead and proceed with it now, and all this will be effective as of January one. So first up is board member compensation. So Mr. Leach?
Yes, the first item for business heading into the new year is action to approve boardroom compensation. Administration will recommend that the board approve the same compensation as we had this current year and previous years, where the base salaries remain at two thousand dollars per year with an additional twenty-five dollars per DM for the regularly scheduled board meetings, along with current additional stipends for special meetings of sixty-six dollars per day and thirty-three dollars per half-day.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
As far as board member compensation, motion to approve is presented by Mrs. Blackman, seconded by Mr. Pine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Next up, Dr. Gramau?
Yes, we need to appoint a treasurer and a deputy treasurer, and we have a unique situation here as we transition. Mr. Leach is the corporation treasurer, and Mrs. Mary Castleman is the deputy treasurer for 2024 until her retirement date of March first of 2024. Mrs. Holly Singleton is the interim deputy treasurer for 2024, and Mrs. Mary Castleman retires, in which Mrs. Holly Singleton will be the deputy treasurer. So like I said, a unique situation. So we are asking, or we are recommending as approved that as stated this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve as stated.
I'll second.
As far as appointment of treasurer and deputy treasurer, Mrs. Blackman has made a motion to approve as stated. Mr. Trulove has seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
All right, Board, the next item on the agenda is to appoint an East Noble attorney. Currently, we have Barnes and Thornburg LLP as our attorney for this year. So the administration recommends the board appoint Barnes and Thornburg LLP as the East Nobles Co-Corporation attorney for calendar year 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
For the administration's recommendations as far as school attorney, Mr. Pine has made a motion to approve as presented. Dr. Jansen has seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
The next item is to designate a publication or newspaper for publications currently used, the Kenable News Sun. Therefore, the administration will recommend the board designate the Kenable News Sun as a newspaper for all required legal publications for calendar year.
I'll make a motion to approve as suggested.
I'll second.
Dr. Jansen has made a motion to approve the administration's recommendations as presented, seconded by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
We now designate a depository for calendar 2024. The administration will recommend we continue with Lake City Bank as a depository of funds for the East Nobles Co-Corporation for calendar year 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I'll second.
For the depository designated for 2024 year, motion was made by Mrs. Blackman to accept administration's recommendations, seconded by Dr. Jansen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
Board, each year, a board of finance needs to be created. In the past, customary to use the appointed, or I'm sorry, the appointed elected board members as that board of finance. So the administration will recommend the board designate the entire school board trustees as East Nobles Co-Corporation Board of Finance for calendar year 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
There's a motion to approve as presented by Mr. Trulove, the Board of Finance, seconded by Dr. Jansen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
Along with the Board of Finance, we also have to establish financial goals. As we have had this current year and previous year, the administration will recommend we approve the financial goals as follows. With strong and responsible fiscal management currently established, East Nobles Co-Corporation shall maintain the current levels between expenditures for the student instruction spending expenditure categories and other expenditure categories as described in Indiana Code twenty-one dash ten dash three dash four for the next fiscal year.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I'll second.
Mrs. Blackman has made a motion to approve as presented the financial goals that was seconded by Mr. Trulove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
I think that's most of the annual stuff. We'll move on to the other items under business. So the first item would be action to approve the RFPs for E-Rate funding for 2024. Board, as we have approved in the past, the advertisement of the E-Rate projects such as internet services, access point servers, and so forth. Those bids have been received, evaluated by now myself, but also Technology Department. So the administration would recommend the board approve. toward the bids to Lakeville and CDWG as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the RFPs for the E-Rate for fiscal year 2024 by Mr. Pine, seconded by Mr. Trulow. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
Board, this is also an exciting part of the year where the state of Indiana provides additional monies to school corporations to provide their certified teachers who are rated effective or highly effective additional compensation through teacher appreciation grant. We've been fortunate for the past several years to also match some of those funds for our classified staff and administrators in some capacity. Some years more than others. But this time, I'm pleased to announce or excited to announce the administration would recommend the board approve to pay a stipend to all certified teachers and administrators who are rated effective or highly effective for the '22, '23 school year and are currently employed and in good standing by East Noblesco Corporation for the '23, '24 school year. The money used to pay these stipends are from the education operations funds along with money received from the state in the form of the teacher appreciation grant.
I'll make a motion. Oh, are you still reading?
Still reading a little bit. As designated by Indiana Code 20-43-10.3 urgency, upon the approval of these stipends, we pay out on December 15th, 2023. The administration also recommends the board approve and pay a stipend to all classified employees who are hired on before December 1st, 2023 and are actively employed by East Noblesco Corporation or servicing East Noblesco Corporation at the time of the payout. All employees must be in good standing to receive the stipend. The money used to pay these stipends are from the educational operational and food service funds. Upon approval, these stipends will also be paid out on December 15th, 2023. And students see, okay, yep. Now your turn, Jen.
I would make a motion to approve as presented. I'll second.
For the approval of the administration or administrative certified and classified stipend, Mrs. Blackman has made a motion to approve as presented, seconded by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
As we evaluate our pay to different groups at different times of the year, one group, we've had to call back and rely upon some of our part-time SROs as we're in a transition period with one of our full-time SROs. So as we reviewed that, we realized that the pay for, or paying the part-time SRO was, has not been changed since before I arrived. So it's been several years, so. Isn't that all part of the first one?
No. Yeah, she did mention the tag, but you mentioned it.
Okay, so it's split. Okay, action to approve the teacher appreciation, teacher appreciation grant stipends.
I make a motion to.
Thanks, Jen.
I'll second that one. Thank you.
We have a motion to approve teacher appreciation grant as presented by Mrs. Blackman, seconded by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Okay, Brian?
All right, so we'll move into action to approve SRO ages. So the administration would recommend the board approve paying part-time SROs $30 per hour for coverage during the school day. And all SROs being paid $35 an hour for coverage at East Noble extracurricular activities, including school board meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mrs. Klein has made a motion to approve wages for SROs, seconded by Mr. Trulow. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, board, is to create a new substitute nursing position. It's not a position we've had in the past. But with the needs in all of our buildings, we're finding a need to try and find additional support when our nurses are out for any given reason. So the administration would recommend to approve the substitute nursing positions as presented.
I have a question about it. What's the availability of a substitute nurse right now?
We have two that are interested.
I'll make a motion as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the substitute nursing position by Dr. Jansen, seconded by Mr. Pine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
In your packet, board, you received some information from our technology department, specifically Rick Williams, who is our network administrator. We need to purchase some new HP servers to update some of our older servers. So the administration would recommend the board approve the purchase of three HP servers as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I'll second.
There is a motion to approve the purchases of HP servers by Dr. Jansen as presented, seconded by Mr. Trulow. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda, board, is to approve the adult breakfast and lunch prices. As many of you know, we've moved, Roger has worked hard to move to provide free breakfast and lunches to all buildings K through eight. And we'll work again next year to try and get the high school included within that. So what we're talking about here are adult lunches. So as individuals, adults, who come in to eat lunch, whether it be staff members or what have you, because we are now part of the program that provides free meals to our students, we are in a position to, we need to increase those adult lunch prices to meet the requirements of the state. So the board, or the administration would recommend we increase those adult lunch prices as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
There is a motion by Mrs. Klein to approve the adult lunch and breakfast price increase, seconded by Dr. Jansen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries.
All right, next up, those policies. In your packet, you received 15 policies. You were presented with these at the last board meeting. All but one stayed the exact same. And so the one that has changed, I'm going to kind of review those modifications just so you're aware of what those are. They were highlighted in your packet, so you were aware. And I talked to most of you one-on-one to just kind of give you that update. So our current policy, 9130, now includes matters regarding school library materials, which was presented to you at the last board meeting as an unknown number, because we weren't sure why we were going to assign that. While Neola recommends adding that to our library material policy to that current public complaints and concerns policy. So it'll be another subheading underneath there as it was presented in the packet. Any questions about that? The title was also changed from request to remove materials from school library to matter regarding, matters regarding school library materials. And that is so we were consistent with the other subtitles within 9130. The next change was the Public Access Counselor's recent ruling on open door law does not include a school corporation employee committees. So since we struggle to get people to serve on these committees and to be consistent with the other categories in 9130, it is recommended to limit these committees to school personnel only, which aligns with the recent ruling of the Public Access Counselor. Instructional materials category within policy 9130 has a timeline of 30 business days. And the committee, for the committee to make their recommendation to the requister. The school library materials policy for this, portion of this policy was changed from 28 days to 30 to match what the instructional material part of that policy was. Just wanted to be consistent with that.
Is that business days or days?
It was business days listed, so we listed a school day. So I know this policy is coming back around. We can change it if it's top layer, but. Okay, and a sentence was added, a sentence was added that stated if multiple book reviews are submitted, they will be reviewed in the order in which they were received. That helps us to be able, because we're not getting a lot of people volunteering for these committees. So it does take us a while to get through these books. Many of them are choosing to read, though, in its entirety, which I understand why. And so it does take some time. I also wanted to state that if any parent who feels a book within any of our libraries is inappropriate for their child, they may contact their school principal, the media specialist, to include a checkout with parental permission only designation in our Destiny system. So that's something that can be done. This isn't included in the policy, but I just wanted to make sure that's clear that any parent, if they find any book that's in our libraries and don't want their children to read it, they can certainly go that avenue. So, board, with that information, we're recommending approval of all these policies as presented in the packet, including the changes in policy 9130.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, as far as approval of board policies, Mrs. Blackman has made a motion to approve as presented, seconded by Mr. Trulow. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Okay, Brian?
The next item on the agenda, board, is to deem items obsolete so we can either sell eBay or dispose in the most cost-effective manner. In your packet, you received a list of items. The administration recommends that you deem them obsolete so we can move forward. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Trulow has made a motion to approve as presented selling of obsolete items on eBay, seconded by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Okay, board, that brings us to action to reorganize the board of trustees. We do this every year. At this point in time, I'm going to make a motion for 2024. I'd like to nominate, make a motion to make Mr. Pine the president, Dr. Jansen the vice president, and Mr. Trulow the secretary.
I'll second that motion.
I'm not going to read all that back. You guys know what I just said, so I'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to discussion items and EventLink.
Yes, so, board, in your packet, you received some information regarding a program called EventLink. EventLink is an online program that will allow online ticket sales for our events and a number of other resources for us. But right now, we're talking about online ticket sales and also payment to our officials through this program as well. The reason this is coming about now is the IHSAA is actually going to mandate an online ticket option for all of their events, starting with sectionals and moving forward, or, and, or moving through the state finals. We host the boys' basketball sectional in March. So we want to move forward with this now so we can start testing it out, work out some of the kinks before, before it happens. This does not replace cash ticket sales in our buildings right now. It's just an online option that we can offer visiting teams and even hometown as well. It's called EventLink. Parents can get online. EventLink, I believe we have an option to get on there from our athletic website. They can sign up, they can follow the schedules. We'll also have an online ticket set up from there. So right now, we've got some work to do to get that set up. But we plan to start offering that on a trial basis, starting in January, mid to late January. So we're ready for basketball sectionals that we host. We're also removing and paying our officials through EventLink. It's a little bit cleaner process. So it'll save a little bit of time on our end. There is a fee for both the online ticket sales as well as the paying of the officials. Paying officials is a dollar per event. The purchase, or the fee for purchasing a ticket online is 85 cents per ticket. So I asked if you guys are in agreement with this. I sent, I guess I took a little bit of the video. There's also some information there. If you are in agreement, I would make a, or ask for you to approve this tonight so we can process the setup and start doing this, like I said, in, in January.
This is a voteable item? So I don't have it listed as.
It's a discussion, but you can turn it into a voteable item.
Gotcha.
And I have to let you give me the information first to have the time to talk about it before going to that.
We have a chance to review and look over it. Anybody have any questions?
I just, I mean, I think it's great, going to basketball games. I think it's great. Like, we've gone and been like, oh, we didn't stop to get cash. And they've had the option for us to buy. So I, I think it's a great option to have. Is this something that we could open up to our concessions in?
In time.
Sure, I mean, obviously not in January, but in time. We could open it there, yeah.
There is a piece to this program that is an option. But there's a lot of work in order to get to that, to that point. Part of the problem with concessions is you have so many people in and out to get people trained, and mostly students are running it. That becomes part of the challenge. But it is done at some large schools and something that we can look, look to do in the future. But again, EventLink is something that's, that's, many schools participate in. It's probably one of the biggest ones in the state of Indiana. And so that's why we're choosing to go with that stuff. And when IHSAA works closely with us. So we're excited to offer that opportunity to get moving forward.
And you did allude that patrons who still want to pay cash can.
Yes. Yes.
And there are, how many, how many tickets can we sell?
So we dictate what that number is. So when we set up an event, you know, it's a basketball game, we can put in the number of tickets, number of seats that we basically have available. And we can, you know, limit, you know, the opposing team to so many tickets and so forth. So there's lots of control within that, that program and that process. There's also lots of reporting that can come with that, too, so we can actually know what our actual attendance is, you know, who is buying them. At some point in time, we can also add in season passes. We can do all kinds of things with this program. But right now, we're always focusing on just getting ready for basketball sectionals. And I think as we work through this, I don't see it being a very hard process. It's just taking a little bit of time. Maybe for next school year, we can start offering a few more options. So we're pretty excited about it.
It's just a general ticket, it's not a seat.
Right now, EventLink only has the opportunity to do general admission. So it's not an option for those events that are held within our auditorium, such as maybe show choir or theater, because they can't designate individual seats at this time. They're working on that process. It's something we could use maybe in the future. But right now, they don't have that option or that ability other than just a general admission.
Okay, because the, we have something for the theater.
There's a different program process for.
But they can be combined or eventually bring on that. No, not at all.
Different programs.
Right. But eventually, if.
If EventLink actually develops that option, it's something that we could look at, yes.
I see the benefits to this, but I also see some of the drawbacks. Where replaces have went exclusively to credit card or debit card? I don't want to see us do that now. So, okay. Just kind of throwing that out there.
Now, this, this program is going to also add in a number of cash ticket sales you anticipate to sell. And you can load that in as you're selling them. So you have reporting on both cash and, and credit card sales.
Any other questions, board? I think we should move forward with this. If they want to do something.
I'll make a motion to move forward as suggested by Brian.
I'll second.
There's a motion to, by Dr. Jansen, to move forward with Event Link ticket sales, seconded by Mrs. Klein. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to late items. Any late items?
No.
Mr. Leach? Dr. Ford? Comments from the superintendent?
Yeah, we're closing in on our middle of the year, our school year, winding down down to four days, just got my mom checking. So just want to say we've had a lot of celebrations, a lot of things going on, musicals. We've had a showcase last night at the bell school, which was amazing. I've been busy with my superintendent on the move, so I've sent four of those in today. So just want to say we're just really excited about what the staff is doing. We had a principal meeting this last Tuesday and yesterday. Seems like it's Friday right now, but just really some promising data that we're seeing and some work that's happening in the schools. And we're just very excited about that. So just appreciate our staff so much and the hard work. And we really know that they're staying focused on what our kids are supposed to be doing, which is, you know, the teaching and learning aspect of it and keeping them at the center of everything we do. Just really appreciate that, so. Also, board, as you can see, the poinsettias are down there in front. Those are yours to keep for Christmas gap. Just want to say how much we appreciate you as a board. You've been amazing to work with. I know there's lots of challenges that come with this. There's hard decisions to make, but I just really appreciate how much you hang in there and just, I, I think you each, every one of you, bring something great to this, this board. The backgrounds that you have, the skills that you have, I think that perspectives that you give, I just want to say I really appreciate that. And what you do behind the scenes, I think people don't really understand. So thank you for all that you do. Appreciate it. I also want to recognize Mr. German for being the board president for the last three years. A man of few words, however, his integrity and his commitment to East Noble is absolutely commendable. So thank you for serving three years as the president. Appreciate it, board, for working with Mr. Buckham, so.
I'm looking forward to working with them also. Uh, board members, is there any other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Pine? To the board as well as the public, we've been exploring the creation of an East Noble Educational Foundation. We've been working on that, and we are ready to begin, I guess, the early stages of, I don't know if implementation is the right word, but we're ready to move forward to taking some of the work we've done and then going into the process of getting started. So we're excited about that, and this has been a factor to our East Noble community, our students and staff. So if anyone would be interested in learning a little bit about that, or would you like to, to maybe get in and have the opportunity to perhaps work with some of those things, we don't know how that process will work yet. Like I said, we're in the early stages, but we certainly welcome the opportunity for it to become engaged. And many of you have my email address. It's dpine@eastnoble.net. I have it for a long time now, so.
Any other questions or comments?
No, Dave, to expand on a little bit, for people who aren't understanding 100%, but other school corporations have foundations set up. And they've been successful to engage with the community and through alumni and have events and things like that, and even some financial opportunities that can benefit students and schools. So I can, that's kind of the driving force.
It has started from the creation of an alumni committee.
Yep.
An alumni group, and then the next logical step would be moving forward in this association.
Yep, so, thank you for bringing that up, and congratulations on being the president. I look forward to, you know, serving under you. And I want to, second Dr. Ramo, thank you, Brian, for what you've done the last three years. It's been great leadership. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, anything else, board members?
I went to a training on Friday, went to a law seminar, and they had attorneys speak about different topics. And one of them was about books and a lot of great information that was on there, how they talked about law and our, our boards being charged, prosecuted for having these books. And I don't think prosecutors in their opinion had, and the ones that they talked to have time for, for that. Johnson County said no, his prosecutor already said, no, we're not, we're not charging. So much information and using social media, in school, out of school, what do we do? When there's something that comes in, it just disrupts so much. So I would encourage if there are, if any of you are able to attend one of those law seminars, to, I highly recommend going. And you get to connect with other board members. And also, one of the things they recommended, you know, we're going, the new session is about to start in January, is to bring those updates to, to the board to let you know, hey, this is what they're talking about. Although we do every Friday get updates from Karen, I think it is. Karen sends those in there. And it's, it's interesting to follow, you know, you start out with 200, and then you eventually get down to, you know, 45 new ones for educators and boards and such. So I would highly recommend if you can go.
If you'd like a copy of that webinar and stuff, I can send that one to you. I got it.
Oh, good, oh, the 45 pages?
Because I couldn't, I couldn't go.
Yeah, 145, yeah, it's great.
I don't know if the pages, I believe they're on slides.
Yeah, oh, yes. We did have someone.
If you wanted to.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, that's going to bring us to the conclusion of our meeting. The board will meet in executive session following through Indiana Code to discuss various topics. Those are listed at the bottom of the agenda. The next regular school board meeting will be Wednesday, January 24, 2024, instead of 23, beginning at 6:00 PM at the East Noble Middle School. With that, this meeting is adjourned.